City Council, Public Hearings. Now we call to order. Counselors Kadeem?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Lala B. LeBeau?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Peckham?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Ferreira?
Here.
And President Potti. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item is a curb removal, Item 1, Brenner's Corporation, 188 Trendmont Street, for the removal of curbing as follows. You need a motion to open the hearing?
Motion is made.
Motion to open the hearing made by Counselor Peckham, seconded by Counselor Dion. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes so voted. Curb opening is at 1311 County Street. Petitioner has an existing 22.5-foot driveway and is requesting the removal of another 18 feet of curbing to the north side of the existing opening for a total of 40.5 feet. This curb removal will allow for more parking for residents of the duplex. Are there any proponents wishing to speak? Any proponents, any opponents wishing to speak?
Motion to close? Hold on.
I want to talk on it.
Madam Clerk, is there any written proponents or opponents on this one?
This is for the Brenner?
This is the Item 1.
No, we have none.
Counselor Lee?
I thought we had an email of someone that was opposed to this, but I guess not. So I yield.
There is one, there is an email on Item 2, Counselor.
Okay, thank you.
That's not for this one.
You yield?
Yes, I yield. Thanks.
Counselor Seade, Counselor Parra?
Yeah, I have an issue with this. I've talked to some people that live down on County Street. This is a duplex that they must have gotten a variance for some time ago. It's built sideways, and it's for a duplex for 40 feet, 40 and a half feet total, in a congested neighborhood. I would make a motion that it go to committee.
This is on our agenda?
Yep, but that's what I would be, I don't...
We're in public hearing right now.
Correct, yes. You can make that motion when it comes to us. You yield? Anything further from the council?
Motion to close hearing.
Motion to close the hearing made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Parra. All those in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Item 2 is People Incorporated of 1040 Eastern Avenue for the removing of curbing. Motion to open the meeting?
Motion is made.
Motion to open made by Counsel Lee, seconded by Counsel Peckham. All those in favor?
Aye.
So voted. Petitioner has an existing 26-foot driveway on Eastern Avenue and is requesting the removal of another 16-foot curb on the McGowan Street side for a total of 42 feet. This curb would allow for vans to enter from Eastern Ave. and exit on the McGowan Street side. Are there any proponents wishing to speak? Proponents? Just come right up to the microphone.
Bill Perkins from People Incorporated. We're proposing this to improve safety conditions in that area. It's extremely difficult for vehicles, vans in particular, dropping folks off, to have to turn around in that parking lot. There are often people walking around in that parking lot, and it creates a safety hazard. Recent construction on Eastern Ave. exacerbated that problem and brought us here tonight to ask for the second curb cut.
Do you have a question, Counselor?
No.
Thank you. Any opponents? Any opponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
We do have one objector.
Thank you. Anything from the council? Counsel Seade?
Yeah, doing full counsel, send this to committee as well.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
When we go to full counsel, I'd like to send this to committee as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry I'm late, guys, I had traffic. All right, Item 3 on our agenda is Jerry Ayers of 457...
We didn't close the second item, sir.
Motion to close the hearing?
Well, I just had a question, I'm sorry. The objection, was there anything in the email regarding the objection? Was there any extra information that needed to be heard publicly?
Madam Clerk?
Hold on, I'm finding it. Yes. This is the neighbors opposing the curb cut, parking from Andrade's to the corner is enough for six spots. Curb cut will take up two parking spaces, which will leave four spaces left. When snow removal starts, there are five families affected with parking on the right side of the street. By them making this curb cut, it will be a huge inconvenience to the neighbors on McGowan Street.
Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Anything further?
Motion to close?
Motion to close, Item 2, has been made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Vice President. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item 3, Jerry Ayers of 457 Locust Street, for the removal of curbing. Is there a motion to open?
Motion is made.
Made by Counselor Lee, seconded by Counsel Peckham. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Jerry Ayers of 457 Locust Street for the removal of curbing as follows. The petitioner has an existing 11.9-foot driveway and is requesting the removal of an additional 8.7 feet to the east side of the existing driveway for a total of 20.6-foot opening. This curb removal will allow for three cars to be taken off the street. Larger openings will allow for cars to back onto Locust Street. Calling all proponents wishing to speak on this item. Calling all proponents. Calling all opponents wishing to speak. Calling all opponents. Madam Clerk, anything written?
No, Ms. Parra.
I'm sorry, you are?
I'm the owner.
You're a proponent, correct?
I'm the owner, yes.
So you're in favor. You can go to the mic and speak in favor of the petition, please.
Yes, I'm in favor. This is right across the street from the Citizens' Daycare Center, and it causes issues going in and out of the driveway, being so narrow with people parked so close. I feel it should be allowed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hearing all proponents and opponents and nothing further, motion to close made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Peckham. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Item number, that would be it. Motion to adjourn our public hearings?
Motion to adjourn.
Made by Counsel Lee, seconded by Counsel Dion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number... That would be it. Motion to adjourn our public hearings?
Motion to adjourn.
Made by Counsel Lee, seconded by Counsel Dion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Jerry Ayers of 457 Locust Street for the removal of curbing as follows. The petitioner has an existing 11.9-foot driveway and is requesting the removal of an additional 8.7 feet to the east side of the existing driveway for a total of 20.6-foot opening. This curb removal will allow for three cars to be taken off the street. Larger openings will allow for cars to back onto Locust Street. Calling all proponents wishing to speak on this item. Calling all proponents. Calling all opponents wishing to speak. Calling all opponents. Madam Clerk, anything written?
No, Ms. Parra.
I'm sorry, you are?
I'm the owner.
You're a proponent, correct?
I'm the owner, yes.
So you're in favor. You can go to the mic and speak in favor of the petition, please.
Yes, I'm in favor. This is right across the street from the Citizens' Daycare Center, and it causes issues going in and out of the driveway, being so narrow with people parked so close. I feel it should be allowed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hearing all proponents and opponents and nothing further, motion to close made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Peckham. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Item number, that would be it. Motion to adjourn our public hearings?
Motion to adjourn.
Made by Counsel Lee, seconded by Counsel Dion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Former City Council Committee on Finance will now be called to order. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Kadeem?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Lala B. LeBeau?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Peckham?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Ferreira?
Here.
And President Potti?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item on our agenda this evening is citizens' input. Only one person signed up to speak, Alexander Silver of 263 Pine Street regarding the TIF and the residence at North River.
Hello, Alexander Silver, 263 Pine Street. Members of the City Council, if residents are expected to shoulder a higher share of the tax burden for private development, it should only serve the best interests of the city. When the residences at North River project was first proposed for the circa 1887 Sagamore Mill building at 148th Street, the plan was to redevelop the mill into 146 apartments. At a time when Fall River residents are more concerned with housing, a tax break for 146 new units would have provided a benefit to the city while preserving a historic landmark in the community. But a tax break to rehab the mill was never applied for. The owner abandoned the plan, saying his estimate of $20 million to redevelop the Sagamore Mill into apartments was too much. But now he asks for a tax break on a $19 million project. If the cost to redevelop the mill was a deciding factor, how will this project change again when it begins and the costs are adjusted after the winter? With existing space still vacant throughout our downtown and other mills, does the new plan to build new office and commercial and industrial space provide any new benefits to the community? The main benefit presented to the TIF Board on December 8th was that this project would create jobs, with applicant only required to create 25 jobs at the location. But this is a very low bar for a third of a million dollars in lost revenue to the city, especially when the project is already responsible for eliminating jobs after at least half a dozen local business tenants were kicked out of the mill so it could be demolished. If the only requirement for the tax break is restoring the jobs it lost, does this project justify a tax break? Especially when the city saw the applicant threaten legal action against Fall River for the Durfee HVAC project, he admitted his own company messed up. What guarantees do residents have that the $316,251 tax break for this project will benefit them? Rather than rewarding people for tearing down historic buildings to make the largest profit, we should reward projects that seek to improve Fall River's existing assets and take residents into consideration. How does another strip mall factor into the connected and walkable waterfront or the vision presented in the city's master plan and urban renewal plans? Does this project serve the city's best interests enough to ask residents to front a $316 bill for it? Thank you, sincerely, the Board of Directors of the Preservation Society of Fall River.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is a discussion with the TIF agreements for the residents at North River, as well as Millstone Medical Outsourcing. Mr. Faola? And you can take both of them together, Mr. Faola, if you like.
Good evening, Counsel President, members of the City Council. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come before you tonight to discuss the two projects at hand. The first project on your agenda is the residences at North River LLC. This project will consist of the development of four new buildings totaling an estimated 297,000 square feet of developable space and representing a private investment of $19 million on land located at 148th Street, Fall River, Mass. It's anticipated the tenants of the building will represent industrial, commercial, and professional uses and result in the creation of more than 25 new jobs by the tenants of the property. This is noted in the attached TIF agreement that you have before you. The local incentive valuation, the proposed term of the TIF agreement is for a period of five years, and the developer will be afforded a 50% tax savings during this timeframe. The project and associated $19 million of private sector investment is taking place within the city of Fall River Waterfront Urban Renewal Plan and Census Track 6421, which has a poverty level of 24%. This project appeared before the TIF Board last week, received the unanimous consent and approval of the TIF Board, and it's being brought to you tonight for your approval. Just in general, there's a tremendous demand for the space availability right now. I don't want to be contradictory to any other beliefs in the city that there's a lot of space available. The city is extremely tight on space right now. If we, I could easily fill probably anywhere between, I don't know, say 200,000 to 400,000 square feet of space if it was available today in terms of space that's being designed and could accommodate professional, industrial, and commercial use. Typically, this space would represent a space that's on one level, it has loading docks, it has ample off-street parking, and it has the ability to accommodate different types of uses. The lack of space availability within the city right now is actually a hindrance to economic development because we're losing out on economic development projects that would be creating jobs throughout the city. So the utilization of this site for the development of these types of properties, I think, will help offset some of the demand that's out there and will result in a minimum of 25 jobs. Obviously, I think the 25 jobs is a very conservative number, but we don't want to get to the point where you're over-promising the number of jobs, but I do believe 25 is a minimal number that could be accommodated down there. If you look at the location, which I'm sure many of you have been by, there's other development that's occurring within that area, everything from the Star facility to the marijuana facility that's currently there that's now, is no longer doing retail, but it's just more of a grow facility. Also, the Trina building behind there is being utilized for manufacturing purposes. This space fits within the context of the other tenants within that area. And while it may not be used for housing, which was the original intent of the owner, things change. The cost of development housing is very expensive. So even at 146 units, or 126, whatever was the initial proposal, the rule of thumb for these units is anywhere between $275,000 to $325,000 per unit. So even at 100 units, you're looking probably close to $30 million of investment. And that's an extremely large number, especially when you don't have the necessary tax credits to help offset it. And the H-TIP program, which is no longer available through the state in the same conditions and terms that it was previously. So you have this piece of property down there as all TIFs. The taxable value of that piece of land is going to remain as-is. They'll always be paying that tax revenue. The new revenue payment to the city will be based upon the new development, and that's for a period of five years. And over that five-year period, the city will receive approximately $346,000 of new taxes, and the developer will also be saving approximately $346,000 in savings to help offset the overall cost of development, which is estimated to be $19 million. Be happy to answer any questions. We also have the owner of the property here with us tonight, Dwight Silver.
Counselor in Seat 3, Counsel Kilby.
You answered most of my questions, Mr. Faola. 99.9% of the time, I support these tests. When you say the 25 jobs, those are permanent jobs.
Those are permanent jobs, yeah.
Can you estimate how many jobs people are going to be employed in terms of the... I know it's a tough question.
It all depends on the tenants that are there. So you have the construction jobs that are going to be associated with the project, but actually, the full-time permanent jobs on there, it could easily be closer to 75 to 100, right? But we always like to take a conservative approach here because you don't want to over-promise and under-deliver. So in this particular instance, because we don't know exactly who the tenants are, it's going to be put up as spec buildings, the tenants will determine the actual job creation number.
Just a quick thing, too. I know Counsel Parra brings this up quite often. We still have the clause, forgive me if I didn't pick it up in the agreement, but Fall River residents have preference?
Yes, Fall River residents have preference, and also if there's a failure to create the jobs, the city has the right to rescind the TIF.
Thank you, sir. I yield.
Counselor in Seat 5, Counsel Lee.
You estimated $346,000 in tax revenue over the next five years?
Five, yes. So that would be the tax savings to the developer, as well as the amount of revenue coming to the city.
But that's not what they would be paying, that's not totaled in as what they would be paying for the next five years in property taxes, correct? Or commercial taxes?
Yeah, so they'd be paying whatever the land value is, that remains taxable. This is a new growth, and we're estimating that the developer will save $346,000, and he will also be paying $346,000.
So we still have more coming in on top of that, depending on what the commercial tax rate is.
That's correct. So that's based upon today's current tax rate, and it's also based upon comparables, so it could come in higher than that.
I think, obviously, there's always back-and-forths on TIFs, but I have to say that I mostly supported TIFs as well because I think it's a competitive market, right? I think that there's a lot of places around us that can make buying property affordable. And Fall River, when it came to Amazon and things like that, we had to compete with other places around here. So I think if we can build business through this method, then we should probably do so.
And at the end of five years, whatever, so right now, if nothing changed, at the end of five years, the city would be receiving over $720,000 once the TIF expires, right?
I mean, some places have, in the past, have sort of packed up and left at the end of a TIF.
Not many. And actually, if they pack up and leave during the TIF, then the property becomes fully taxable at that point. There's only probably been a hand, and actually, when they leave and somebody reoccupies their property, it's actually beneficial to the city because now they're paying the full tax burden, right? So there hasn't been many companies that have done that. Companies usually go into these things with the best intentions, that they're going to stay there. Sometimes, market conditions or management of the company may force them out of business, but they typically do not go into these deals thinking that they're going to try to take advantage of the city in the way the TIFs are structured now. Even if they leave, we can also recapture the benefits that were given to them.
I want to do my absolute best to make sure I stay on the topic here, but what goes into, when a company initially begins saying they're going to do this type of business or this type of purchase, and then they change it in the middle, how does that work towards a TIF agreement? Do you have to start from scratch all over again? Is that what happens?
Yeah, so if in fact the property was going to be utilized for its original intent for residential, I would probably be here before you asking for a tax increment exemption as opposed to a tax increment finance, right? Because the exemption applies to residential, to TIF, the finance applies to the businesses. So in either event, we'd be coming to the city to try to offset some of the development cost. The problem that we have in today's market is, some of the incentives being offered by the state are no longer there. There was the H-TIP program, which has been utilized, the Housing Development Improvement Program, which has been utilized in all the recent mill conversions for residential. And for instance, Commonwealth Landing got a $1.9 million H-TIP award. Adams House got 1.5. The Residence in DePaul Street got 1.5. And that money is very important to offset the overall cost of these projects. Now, without that, it's becoming more difficult to develop these projects.
And so we can assume that that wasn't available with this particular project? Okay, thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in Seat 8, Counsel Parra.
The only thing that I'd like to have Mr. Faola elaborate on is the fact that if this is commercial, industrial space, how much space do we have up in Industrial Park versus a small business coming in and what they want? Because we hear, well, there's empty stores throughout the city, but what are these particular people looking for when they come in that other places don't offer, other vacant buildings don't offer?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So if you haven't done so, I would encourage you all to take a ride through the industrial park. The park is almost at 100% occupancy, with the exception of the Light Lear Building, which ironically, today, I did have a conversation, a confidential conversation, with an entity that's looking to purchase it and would be utilizing it for business purposes, obviously, and creating a significant number of jobs there. But that's a big building, that's about 300,000 square feet, and that's going to be under agreement shortly, according to the conversation today. If you take that building out of the equation in terms of vacancies at the park, we're almost 100% full. There really is not any buildings that are available for lease. I'm working with a couple of companies up there right now that could use another 50,000 square feet, could use another 100,000 square feet, but there's not a lot of land availability there to accommodate that. We are in the process of redeveloping the Technology Park. They're going through a permitting process right now to accommodate another 900,000 square feet of development at the park itself. So that will give us a little bit of leeway in terms of doing some of the bigger deals. But for the smaller companies, what companies want today is very simple. They want to have a single-story facility. They want to have concrete floors. They would like to have off-street parking. They'd like to have loading docks. And those are the types of buildings that sell right now or lease out. The utilization of the upper floors of the mills for industrial purposes is just not working. The space is not conducive to the types of businesses that are looking to expand or relocate. That's why we've been converting a lot of these mills over to residential. So our inability to accommodate the demand that's out there for buildings that are 25,000 to 50,000 square feet is actually causing us to stagnate growth of local companies looking to expand and also stagnating new businesses from coming into the city because we don't have any available real estate to accommodate that. That's why this project here represents the ability to help local companies expand, relocate, and also attract new companies to the area.
Thank you, Mr. Faola. I know we had talked about that during the TIF meeting, but I thought that that was important for people to see what businesses are looking for coming into the community and what this city has to offer. Thank you. With that, I yield, Mr. Faola.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in Seat 4, Counsel Vice President.
My question was asked and answered. Thank you.
Counselor in Seat 1, Counsel Kadeem.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Faola, can I just get some clarification on the project itself? So this is essentially a commercial build-out now, so there's going to be leasing to...
Industrial, commercial, or professional use, yeah.
Okay. So just in terms of, typically when we do the TIFs, we have a company that's coming before us, so they can kind of guarantee the jobs, right? So it's like when Amazon came in, obviously, they're going to be hiring here, where we've got essentially a developer opening up space. How do we, I guess, how do we guarantee, I guess, the job creation?
So in the TIF agreement itself, the developer is going to have to have each individual business report on a job creation on a quarterly basis. That will be sent to the assessor's office so that there's a, you can track the actual jobs that are being created. Years ago, we couldn't...
So is he, I guess, before, when he's looking at the tenants, is he going to be, I guess, making, I guess, reviewing the tenants that are coming in just to see what jobs are being created in there?
Yeah, that would be part of the evaluation, correct. They're not going to, chances are, you're not going to have $25,000, $25,000 square feet or so being utilized just as a storage facility, creating one job, right? So they understand, he understands that this is based upon job creation. So in today's marketplace, he'll have his selection of tenants that will be looking to locate into this facility, and then he'll be able to pick and choose which ones are the biggest job creators for the TIF.
Now, are these new jobs in the sense of, and the only reason I ask, new jobs versus, I guess, existing jobs if you're going from Rhode Island over to Massachusetts? So if you've got a company that's coming in from Rhode Island, moving their business into Fall River, would that be considered, and they're bringing, just say, 25 employees over, would that be considered 25 new positions? Or how do we measure that?
If it's a new company creating new jobs, it's new positions. If it's an existing company that's moving into the space...
Relocating, from a different state.
From a different state. If you relocate jobs from a different state into this state, the state treats those as new jobs.
New jobs.
Okay? If, for instance, you are a company that's already located in the city and you're employing 10 people and you're locating in this space, that would not be considered new jobs. It would have to be in addition to the jobs that you currently have.
And do we have estimates? And I know they're rough estimates because obviously, we don't know who the tenants are going to be, but in terms of estimated salaries that we can anticipate for the...
I do not have that, no. It's just based on the use, yeah.
Right.
Yep. But I just, this is a little bit different because this is a TIF-only, so there's no state tax credits being allocated here, and they changed the state regulations two, three years ago where now, you don't actually, you can get a TIF-only without creating any new jobs. So, rather than going down that, you know, that direction, we've agreed to at least create a minimum of 25 jobs.
Okay. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor in seat two, Councilor Dion.
Good evening, how are you?
Good evening.
So, 290,000, 297,000 square feet, the building similar in size?
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're pretty similar in size, yeah. Four different buildings, yeah.
Okay, so basically, we're talking if they fill these buildings with tenants, we're looking at initially 6.25 employees per building.
Potentially.
And they're pretty, fairly large buildings.
That would be, that would be a minimum.
Yep. But that's a fairly large building and undertaking for a minimal number of employees.
It depends, you get some buildings, the, in the Industrial Park that actually have less employees per square foot than that.
Is there a timeframe for vetting and them approving the tenants that they may take in?
So, the TIF is for a period of five years. The TIF actually becomes valid once there's a certificate of occupancy issued for the building. So, if you were to approve this tonight, the TIF would not begin until the building is issued a certificate of occupancy by the building inspector. That's when the timeframe would initiate. And then, they have that five-year period in which to create the jobs. I, let me see, any TIF agreement here? Hold on, just check it real quick. Just looking at this real quickly here. If that is not in here, we can include that into the TIF agreement so that, we don't want to have the jobs created all at the end, we want to get them upfront, right, and then maintain. If that paragraph is not in here, we can add that language to this because this is still a draft.
Okay, so theoretically, we could approve it with that needing to be amended before it would be, actually be fully approved.
That is, yeah, so you could approve it tonight, subject to that being incorporated here, which we would incorporate, and then it would be reviewed by legal counsel and before it's signed.
So, so the TIF actually doesn't kick in until the building is occupied? Is that what you're saying?
That, that's correct. That's when the schedule begins, yeah.
Okay, so what amount, so what taxes are paid between the original groundbreaking, the development, and then the occupation?
So, you have the taxable value of the land continues on, and in some instances, the assessors will assess a building under construction, and so there's a possibility of that occurring as well because that may have a taxable value. It all depends how quickly the building goes up. Sometimes on a larger buildings, they'll do that, smaller buildings, it's usually, you know, they go up so quickly, they don't get to that point, but that's a possibility.
Okay, because I'm assuming also, I mean, maybe not, I would think, and I could be incorrect, that they would be doing one building at a time as opposed to all of them at the same time?
They're gonna do, they're gonna do two and two.
Okay, I think that's all my questions for now. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Any further questions to Mr. Viola on these two TIFs, A and B? A and B. Council in seat eight, Councilor Pereira.
Just on, on B, on the Millstone Medical Outsourcing, just a quick overview on that, that they were sold and if somebody, another company is coming in and picking up on the TIF or just...
Yeah, just a, just a quick analysis there. So, Millstone Medical is a company that we actually recruited to the city probably back in the early 90s. They started off with 25 employees down on North Main Street in an arrogantite mill. They subsequently have grown to now employ hundreds of employees. Their primary location is at the Commerce Park where they own two properties at that location. They are in the process of selling the company itself to a company that's called, bear with me one second, ACP, Arlington Capital Partners. Arlington Capital Partners is looking to take ownership of the TIF, which gives them the same rights and obligations that Millstone have. In the initial TIF agreement, the TIF agreement had Millstone Medical creating an additional 200 jobs, which Arlington would then be held accountable for, and all the terms and conditions of the original TIF would be transferred to Arlington. So, what you have here before you tonight is a resolution to approve the transfer of the TIF from Millstone to Arlington Capital Partners and an ascent of, ascent to assign the tax increment financing agreement from Millstone by, through the city and Millstone to Arlington Capital Partners.
Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further? Council in seat two, Council Dion.
I just have one question on Millstone.
Yes.
So, Arlington would be picking it up where it is at this point or it would be starting from square one for them?
They'll pick it up from where it is at this point.
So, whatever time has expired is expired.
That's right. It is, yes, that is correct, yep.
Okay, well, how many, how many employees has Millstone added since that TIF was approved?
So, right now, Millstone applies, excuse me, employs 271. At the time of the TIF agreement, they employed 271 full-time permanent employees, and they've agreed to create an additional 100 full-time jobs.
Okay.
And this was executed, sorry, it's on my phone here, but just let me see. This was executed 11/29/18, and the schedule, let me see what the schedule is. I think it was an eight-year TIF. So, they still, so they still got some time. It was actually, it started in, excuse me, it's longer than, FY, July 1st, 2020, and it expires FY 2032, was a 10-year TIF.
Again, for clarification, I'm sorry. You said initially, Millstone had to add 200 jobs? That was part of the TIF agreement?
It was 100, I'm sorry.
They had to add 100?
They employed, they maintained 271 and creating an additional 100.
Okay, so in the, so in the three years, they haven't added employees?
Yeah, they have over in that period. I don't have exactly how many they've employed. That would be, they submit those reports directly to the city.
Okay.
On a quarterly basis.
So, the new company would just have to make up the difference?
Yes, or if they haven't, if they've already, if they've already created 100, then they gotta retain them for the duration of the TIF, yep.
Okay, thank you. That I yield.
Thank you. Anything further? Hearing none, no further questions before Mr. Viola, that will make a motion to adjourn our committee on fire. Made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Pereira. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and happy holidays.
Happy holidays to you, Brian.
Fall River City Council meeting now being called to order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes. Councilors Kadim?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Yeah.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Lee?
Here.
Peckham?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
And President Ponti.
Here. If everybody in the chamber can please rise for a moment of silent prayer.
Could we make this silent prayer in honor of the two gentlemen that we lost this, this past week, Mike Nunes and John Torres?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, and a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and they are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk.
The first item before you is the mayor's request for the reappointment of Richard Calderon to the Community Preservation Committee.
Motion to confirm the appointment made by Councilor Pereira, seconded by Councilor Pelletier. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number two are the TIF agreements. The first for the residences at North River LLC at 148th Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, motion to adopt two A has been made by Councilor Kadim.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Pereira is their discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Two B?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt Millstone Medical Outsourcing LLC.
Second.
Made by Councilor Kadim, seconded by Councilor Pereira. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number three is the mayor's communication and proposed ordinance regarding the Director of Human Resources.
Motion to refer to ordinance would be appropriate.
Motion.
Made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Dion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item four is the mayor's communication and proposed ordinance regarding the Commission of Cemeteries and Trees.
Motion to refer to ordinance has been made by Councilor Dion, seconded by Councilor Pereira. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And item five is the mayor's communication and proposed ordinance regarding the Deputy Police Chief.
Motion to refer to ordinance has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Dion. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The Traffic Commission recommending amendments to the traffic ordinances.
Motion to refer to ordinance?
Motion to refer to ordinance has been made by Councilor Kilby, seconded by Councilor Peckham. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have the updated redistricting map from the Board of Election Commissioners?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the redistricting made by Councilor Kadim, seconded by Councilor Peckham. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The Committee on Regulations at a meeting held on December 7th voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying order be adopted pending approval of the fire chief. We were notified today, oh, this is the second-hand article store for Robert Bagley at 1649 South Main Street. We were notified by the fire chief this afternoon that this is not yet approved. It is still pending the fire chief's approval.
Council in seat three, Council Kilby.
Yes, just wanted to clarify, I'm going to ask my colleagues to table this, to lend its meeting. There were two conditions that had to be met on the part of this business owner. Number one, fire extinguishers, which have been completed, and the second, there was changes to the heating system that had to be done, and that has not been done, it just went on...
Motion to table.
Motion to table has been made by Councilor Lee, seconded by Councilor Peckham, just hearing, no, all those in favor?
Can I finish though? Oh, so sorry, can I finish what I was going to say?
Yeah, let you, yes, I'll let you speak right afterwards. Motion to table has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I'll allow you to speak because it's a regulations item.
Sometimes I like to finish my sentences before...
You second the motion, so. Anything further? Item nine, thank you. Madam Clerk, item nine, please.
The Committee on Regulations at a meeting held on December 7th voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying order be adopted. This was the order repair shop license for Rodrigo Takash located at 192 18th Street. I do want to mention that we did receive a letter on Friday from an abutter. This abutter did not receive their notice in time, but I did want to mention that they did appear at our office. They did not meet the deadline, obviously, to object to this, but I did want to bring it up to the council because they did have issue with this, with the granting of this process.
Has this gone through regulations yet?
It has already gone through the hearing process and the regulations.
Council in seat three, Council Kilby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, we had a full hearing on it, the gentleman are here, and everything passed, Council Peckham, Council Pereira, myself, so everything was approved.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made by Councilor Pereira, seconded by Councilor Lee is their discussion. Hearing none. Council in seat two, Council Dion.
Just a question, what, why, why they weren't notified in a timely fashion or didn't receive it in time to object?
This is the, this is the neighbor, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Do you have any further thoughts on that? Madam Clerk?
They, we did send out the notice by registered mail. They didn't pick up their registered mail.
Okay.
So, it was by no fault of ours, they were notified in time, they just didn't pick up their mail in time.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you very much. Hearing no further discussions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All set, thank you.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on December 7th voted three ayes, one nay to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading as amended, with Councilor Lee voting in the negative and Councilor Kadim absent and not voting. These were the salary amendments.
Motion to reject.
Motion to reject has been made by Councilor Dion, is her seconded by Councilor Peckham, is their discussion. Council in seat two, Councilor Dion.
Yeah, I'd like to just clarify. I voted yes to send it here, but my reason was I felt it was time for it to get out of committee. Action needs to be taken. I think some discussion should still take place. I don't feel that we're in a position as a city to afford these salary increases. I think some of them are a little lopsided. We did make some amendments, but I feel like more amendments could have been made. You know, we have a $30,000 average per capita income in this city. I get that this city doesn't pay what others do, but other cities, their per capita income is also higher. I just don't feel comfortable or feel right in some of the limits. I get when people say, okay, well, it doesn't have to go to the highest amount in the salary schedule, but the fact remains it can. I think some of the, I think some of the increases are larger than they should be, and I just cannot rest comfortably and agree with doing it at a time where we're having budgetary problems, we can't afford what we have, and now we're going to do increases without further new revenue, further expense cutting, et cetera. I just think there just needs to be more conversation, and we need to be a little more proactive in other areas. With that, I yield.
Council in seat five, Council Lee.
Yeah, the ordinance meeting, actually, if we're remembering now, that's probably the last meeting we will have with Mr. Hadi. But there was some interesting conversation going back and forth during that meeting where, you know, some of the people were saying that, you know, our salaries are not comparable to places around us. I voted no to pretty much everything that came across the board when it came to this because I just felt as though we're not looking at this from the correct lens. If we're worried about the salary of someone in another town, then we're not looking at the intricate details of why Fall River struggles, you know, with its tax base. The people, you know, we have a very different overall family income, single and family income from many other places around us that can just sort of give the raises out the way that they are. We have different burdens, we have CSO projects, we have, you know, several other different challenges in the city that puts us in a different financial situation in some other places. So, keep it up with the Joneses, as they say. I don't think we can afford to do that, you know? So, I feel as though we have to go in a different direction. So I feel as though we have to go in a different direction, and with that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor in seat four, Council Vice President.
Thank you. So I just wanted to point out that just because we make amendments to the salary schedule, this is something that we do every three years so that we're not out of ordinance. It is what is in the line item in the budget, that is what their salary is set at. So we have the ability, when we have the budget, to make amendments at that time. It doesn't mean that they're going to go to the top tier, they can't, they have to go by what is the line item in the budget. So, that I yield.
Thank you. Councilor in seat one, Councilor Kadim.
Thank you. I, I appreciate the sentiments that are being made, and unfortunately I wasn't available to make the ordinance committee because of a family commitment. However, and I don't know which positions we're talking about, so I guess I reserve the right to say I don't necessarily disagree with the, my colleagues. But I think when we start talking about salaries, and, and this is where we lose sight of it, and it's not keeping up with the Joneses. We fail to realize that by not having the proper department heads and the employees, we end up costing the taxpayers more money. We constantly look at other communities and say, why are they so efficient? Why are they able to come up with innovative ideas? And that only comes through hiring the right individuals at the right job to perform the duties that are required in service and provide the services that the City of Fall River is, is asking for. So if we're constantly gonna be, you know, not competitive with salaries, then we're just gonna continue to expect what we get, right? We haven't been able to fill a city administrator position, and the reason is, is there's more responsibility in the City of Fall River than any other community. So if we're not gonna pay for that, there is nobody in their right mind in terms of qualifications that's gonna be willing to come down and provide the functions as a city administrator. Not having a, an efficient and effective city administrator creates problems, long-term problems from strategic planning to accountability across the board. We've got a CFO position. If we're not gonna compete with the City of New Bedford, there is a lack, and this is, and this is the reality of the situation, there is a, a lack of candidates in the public center right now, in, in the public sector right now. There are more vacancies, just go to the MMA website, you will see position after position after position that is open for either town administrators, city administrators, CFOs, treasurers, accountants, I mean, things that are vital to a municipality. And they're not able to fill it. I mean, you look at the City of New Bedford, they're, they're advertising a CFO for $170,000. They have a headhunter who is actively seeking to get that position filled, and the City of New Bedford is not able to get that filled as it currently stands. And so if we're not gonna be competitive with the positions that we have, then I think we're just gonna be in the same boat. I think the conversation that needs to be had, and this is something that I've been saying, is, is that there are positions that are in these salary tables that, number one, are pretty much nonexistent, that we should be eliminating. I think there are, there are positions that we should try to make sure that there's more of an identified job description and role and responsibility for these positions so that we can set the expectations in terms of the positions and, and the quality of candidates that we're looking to, to put in these positions. But I think for a long time, the City of Fall River has been plagued with the, and it's systemic, it's not just with this administration and the prior administrations, but there were political hires that, that were put forward. And, and now we're just starting to try to catch up and get to a point where we're treating this as a, a business and not a, a patronage, right? So that we want qualified people, and if you, if you want to attract qualified people, we're competing with the private sector, and that's the reality of the situation. And, and we're never gonna be able to compete with the private sector 100% from a salary standpoint, but we need to be able to compete with other public entities. I just, you know, at the end of the day, there, there are town administrators making way more money with less responsibility in smaller communities. And if we're not willing to make adjustments, then we're just gonna constantly be, you know, struggling to fire, find the right people in the positions that are needed. That's, that's just my take. I, I, I live it on a, on a daily basis, just trying to get the best qualified individuals because I know what it means to have the right people in the right positions. It reduces the municipality's exposure in terms of liability from employment liability, lawsuits, you know, I, I could run the gamut on, on, you know, what having a bad department head can lead to in terms of municipality for, for financial exposure and, and the inefficiencies that get provided in terms of the services. So I for one would like to see this either get resubmitted by the, the administration with a, a clear priority on, on positions that we feel we need to, to improve. And I've said this before, I think we need a, a competitive analysis in terms of salary, but also other, other benefits that are, that are included. Where are we with the healthcare? We pay 75, 25. You look at a, a community like Dartmouth, they're at 51, you know, 49. So we need to take that all into consideration when we start looking at salaries, and that's where we start talking about making sure we're competitive with other communities. So if we have a lower salary, but we have better benefits from healthcare in terms of the city pays 75% of the healthcare versus another community that we're looking at and they only pay 50%, then okay, you can justify a lower salary. But if you've got a community that's paying a higher salary and they're paying less for healthcare, then something's wrong, and we've gotta make that adjustment. If not, we're, we're just not gonna be able to compete and, and get the most qualified individuals. And I think at the end of the day, that's, that's really the most important aspect. But that's what I would like the, the administration to do, a, a true analysis, and then eliminate the positions that have been vacant that we, number one, don't even know what their real job description is in terms of, you know, the functions that they're performing. So let's eliminate that and streamline the, the overall ordinance. So with that, I yield.
Thank you. Councilor in seat seven, Councilor Palatier.
Yeah, first of all, I got this sheet in front of me, not to exceed, not to exceed, but I would like to have what they getting at present time compared to not to exceed. Was that omission, or I was supposed to know that?
It's here.
Huh?
It's here.
Oh, that sheet?
Okay.
All right. And then I'd like to say, the CFO and the city administrator, if you don't pay them, you're, you're not gonna get them, you know that, and you gotta pay. Some of these jobs are gonna be separated and, and decide what we're gonna do. You got the sewer and water, you're looking for more money, of course. A lot of different places in, in the state, they're paying much more money. Mr. Phillips here, and, yeah, well, he wants to get 140, whatever the case may be. Some of the other communities are paying 160, 170, up to 200,000. Here's a guy that was brought up the right way, he knows the job, he knows where the water, what the tunnels is, everything, he knows everything about it. So you try to keep them guys up. He had lost two people, I'm to understand that one has come back. So assist him tonight, well, do you get punished? Only kidding, did he get punished? Oh, no, well, uh, he's not, he's gonna stop from the beginning. Oh, come on, give me a break, where's he gonna stop from the beginning? He's coming back. I don't know how long he was out, or whatever the case may be. Well, you're trying to keep him in, in goodwill and good faith? All right, you're coming back, go back to where you are, don't stop at step one and stop going up the ladder again. I mean, the guy will get discouraged, hell with this, and that's what I would do. But sometimes things are not right, we don't think, whose idea is for him to start there again? It doesn't make any sense to me. But some of these jobs, you're gonna have to pay a little more, that's what you're gonna do, to maintain and keep the people on board. And, and then you, you got, you know, you see these big numbers, and they're big numbers, you know, 100,000, 110,000, and then you see a few of these, not to exceed 45. You have a lot of girls in City Hall that don't make good money. They don't make good money at all. And then you hear from them, gee, you know, they're getting all kinds of raises, all kinds of raises, and we got trouble getting a percent and a half if we're lucky, or we skip this year, next year we'll give you a one and a half percent, one and a half percent. They're coming to work every day, and they work, I mean, they deserve more money. I mean, if you're working for 36, 38, come on, you know, it's just not right. They think everybody here in the city of Fall River, a city worker that works in the city hall is making a lot of, a lot of money. Let me tell you, some of these people are not making a lot of money, some of these people's got families to feed and everything else. It's tough out there, it's tough out there. So, you know, we have to think which way you wanna go, you have to think which jobs you wanna maintain by paying these people the right amount of money. Nobody wants to hear, we're gonna give raises out to people making 100,000, 110,000, but some of these jobs, we have to give them more money to keep them on board and get the job done. And, and many years ago, you had the treasurer that was here for 30 years, you had people who were here for 35 years or 40 years, we kept them. Why did we keep them? Because we took care of them. They give them a little raise every once in a while, you had a few perks and so on and so forth. So that's what we have to do to keep people. Right now, the city's a mess, as far as I'm concerned, a lot of people that we have to hire, and we just can't get them because you're not paying the right amount of money, and that's it. We seem to be getting deeper, deep in the hole. Pretty soon, we're gonna, we'll change every department head, the way I see it, you know? But it's, it's, we have to do what we have to do, that's all. So people are gonna understand that to keep people, you gotta pay them. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Councilor in seat eight, Councilor Pereira.
No, I, I have to agree. We're not getting people to even of a, come in for positions that we have available, and I think the MMA, I mean, look at Water Department. You have to have certain certificates, certain approvals to certain levels to be able to work within the filtration plant. And, you know, we lost a, a very good director there for $8,000. And then we had to go and hire a company to come in, and we're paying them $25,000 a month. So for three months, that they're gonna be here for 75,000 rather than pay the 8,000 more to keep a director, that is financially crazy to do. A mechanic, I mean, we all have automobiles, go and get your car repaired. We know that it costs money to get your car repaired, and you wanna get a good mechanic, they're making good money. So who's gonna take care of our police cruisers and, you know, our city vehicles? But we can't afford even a mechanic. A city administrator, a friend of mine is a city administrator in a smaller area, making 215,000 a year, and we're what, 140? Who's gonna come for 140? You should at least bump it up to 180, 190. I mean, we have to do that to get qualified people, and I think experience matters. Engineers with Opera Funding, a lot of the engineers are doing consulting work, they're making more money than they would have been here. But I think if you have people in those key positions, I think Councilor in seat one said that then they have the time to go out and look for innovative ways and cost-saving measures, that type of thing. I think that those things happen. So, you know, I agree, certainly we can send it back and have them look this over, have administration look this over, and I would like to see it come back when we do have a CFO or a city administrator to go over all of this. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. And before I acknowledge the two of the councils that have already spoke, I just wanna weigh in on this very, very quickly, and everybody's aware. So the city administrator's position's a contracted position, right? So it does, it's not included in here, and a lot of the things counselors, at least from my opinion, are talking about is union positions, which also aren't, isn't on here. So I, I, I'm just, I, I'd like to see this get back to ordinance as well, because quite frankly, we have a revenue problem in Fall River. We have some problems. I mean, that's not going away, and there's gonna be some, you know, the campaign season's over, but we have a debt exclusion coming up on our books next year, real estate taxes is a year behind, we're gonna start seeing that. Is there a fee coming? Is there not a fee coming? We have, tough decisions need to be made, but we don't have the revenue. So when we have this, all these executive and managerial positions before us, not to exceed, not to exceed, I, I think that's a big problem, and I think ordinance really needs to dig deep. And if it's gonna take ordinance committee six months to do it, then so it be. But you need to be careful with this and not stream, not, not misunderstand the fact that the unions might need to get a raise, or the Afmi union might need to get a raise, or the Water Department you, uh, might need to get a raise, whatever union they are, but these aren't union positions. These are department heads or division managers or chiefs who are in the union. So you got, I, I just personally think there's a revenue problem, and I don't think we should be increasing positions until you figure out how you're gonna get the revenue. Councilor in seat one, Councilor Kadim.
Thank you. And I just actually wanted to clarify my comments, because I know I said, you know, city administrator and CFO, I mean, those, those were the talking points that I was going to, but goes right down to the line. And, and I think Councilor in seat seven hit the nail on the head. We're talking about clerical position, okay, union position. The bottom line, though, is that there are public entities that are paying bonuses, sign-on bonuses, to get people into their community. Now, we start talking about tradespeople, whether they're in the union or not in the union. If we don't keep them with a competitive salary, then they're going elsewhere, which then means we're gonna have to go out and get vendors, and the vendors are gonna charge us prevailing wage, which is 30% higher at least at a memo, if not more, than what we would have, what we would be able to provide somebody internally. So that in itself is, is inefficient and actually costs the taxpayers more money because we're not paying competitive salary. So we're constantly going out, prevailing wage, Massachusetts general law requires that, okay? So if anybody has ever looked at the prevailing wage scale, schedule, and actually looked at the work that we have folks performing in-house tasks on, it, it is at least 30 to 50% less than what, what they're making at an hourly rate. So right off the bat, that's where we're going. We start looking at, and I appreciate the, the revenue piece, it's, it's, it's the reality, but we legitimately have a problem with being able to hire people to do the jobs that we need. You go to police, right now with the police reform law, you're not gonna pay police officers enough to go into this profession with all the new requirements that have now just put on, been put on because of police reform. Nobody wants to do that. There, there are offices who have been career officers who are all about public safety, their family has been in public safety, they're looking at an exit strategy. They are talking about, how do I get out of this industry within the next five to 10 years, making that shift? That's on the police side. Fire side, you wanna, I've, I've got seven open positions right now in the Fire Department and Seacock, trying to fill those nearly impossible. Nobody wants to be a firefighter anymore, okay? And quite frankly, that's working 24, so they're only working eight days a month, okay? And I understand it's a difficult task, but there is nobody willing to do that, okay? You wanna go to a building inspector. It took me three years just to get a building inspector, because everybody is currently retiring. The real estate market is so hot, they, they make more money in the private sector. You cannot find a building inspector right now. So now what you're doing is, is you're having, you're, you're contracting with other building inspectors for other communities to come in, and you're paying a premium on this, and it goes on and on and on. So right from the clerical to custodial staff, to police, to fire, to all the executives, and I don't disagree, I think we need to, because I was, I was one that was very vocal about that, we shouldn't be adding assistance to assistance to assistance. We need to be looking at streamlining the, the organizational flow chart and making sure that we have people performing the jobs that are needed. However, with that being said, we also can't ignore that we need to pay people. This is, this is, we, we've got Fortune 500 companies who don't have budgets as big as ours. We've got $360 million, right? And that's not, that's just the operating budget. Forget about all the enterprise funds and, and all these other funds that we use for grants and, and everything else. I mean, the amount of money that comes in and that we're responsible for on a yearly basis is astronomical, and I would, I would challenge anybody in business to tell me that they are not willing to pay proper salaries to get the right people. There's not a business person in this city that would tell me that. Maybe they wanna cheap out and, and try to pay less, but the quality is not gonna be there, right? And when the quality's not there, then you get more headaches. But I'm telling you right now, to retain people, we need to pay them properly. I'm not saying that we need to be at the high end of the salaries, but we need to be competitive, and it comes back to retention, because you have, you have investments into people in terms of historic knowledge, trainings that have been done, and to, to my colleague in seat eight who said that, or, or seven, who said that people are leaving for $8,000. That is, that's, that's hard to replace, and we talked about, you know, the Water and Sewer Department. Okay, we can sit here and talk about the fact that Terry Sullivan is coming back on Sundays on overtime, but at the end of the day, we've got nobody who has the license, who we can fill the position, and it's like, so do we shut down the Sewer Department and the Water Department because we don't have people with licenses? So in order to get somebody with the license, we need to pay them more money, right? We need to be operational 24/7. So we can't just sit in our little box saying, okay, you know what? Fall River, and it's unfortunate, the per capita is what it is. We need to, we need to, as elected officials, need to work with part of the master plan, work with the school department to, to make sure that our educational attainment's are higher and that we're, we're, we're bringing in business that will help to drive that. I mean, we just approved TIFs, we're trying to do our very best to, to bring in businesses so that we're increasing the job retention and the quality of jobs that are here, but at the same time, we can't lose sight of what we're doing in-house, and, and that's all I'm saying. I think there's a happy medium that needs to be fixed, that can be made here, but I think it's gonna take a lot of work, to your point, I think it, it literally is, you know, a six-month process. This isn't what we're gonna be dealing with immediately, it doesn't happen next week, next month, but I think if there are important positions that need to get addressed, then maybe they come down piecemeal, one at a time, so that we can go through this entire list and, and truly vet it, with the understanding that we've gotta be fiscally responsible in making sure that we're not going, you know, again, to the highest level possible. But I, but I think what we often do is we put limitations on the administration, and when you're trying to hire people, it's like, okay, not to exceed on this, not to exceed on that, it's a contract, but we're gonna do this. So I think we need to, we need to, and I've said this before, we need to value the positions that we have. We need to understand what they're responsible for, and we need to place a value on them. And once we do that, then I think we have a good, a good balance of where we need to be. So with that, I yield.
Thank you. Councilor in seat two, Councilor Dion.
Yeah, my final comment will be that to a certain extent, I can agree with comments, certain comments that everybody has made, and I think that is the key to it. I think this needs to be prioritized, I think it needs to come down in smaller samplings. Yes, are there, are there positions that you do need a certain expertise and a certain dollar value? I won't disagree with that, but not everybody in these papers is a department head or a director either. I don't believe, as Councilor in seat two said, we have clerks, we have people who work in City Hall that have worked here five, 10, 15, 20 years, making 36, 38,000 dollars. But we have a position on here that's technically a two-year position, it's not a career. It's not a career, that the present salary's $38,000, but the recommended not to exceed is $50,000. Well, that's a $12,000 increase for somebody who potentially could be here only for two, for two years. Those type of things I can't go along with. You know, I think somebody in that position certainly shouldn't be making 12, or 14, or $16,000 more than somebody who's been doing their work, doing a good job, doing it faithfully for years and is still only making $36,000 a year. So yes, I think we need to prioritize, we need to assign dollar values that are reasonable and fair, and where we can cut, we need to cut. And with that, I yield.
And be consistent with it. Councillor in seat eight, councillor Perera.
Yeah, I would just like to add that this not to exceed is because department heads get a percentage, or they get the CPI, or they get a percentage of whatever the union contract was. So I would like to see any of these positions that are not within ordinance now, because that's how we got them down initially, that some of them were not in ordinance, that those be the first ones that we get back from administration, those that are not currently in ordinance. So we can do that here somehow, or I can...
We can refer it back to ordinance, and the ordinance chair could speak with the mayor, mayor and the finance team, or whoever that is, and figure this out, whoever the ordinance committee chair is going to be next year. So we can reject this and refer it back to the subcommittee.
I don't have a problem doing that. I just think that if we're going to bring it in, I think that the ones that are not currently under ordinance, that they're above, that those be the first ones that we get to, to clear that up. So there's a motion to refer to ordinance, or to refer to administration?
Actually, the motion on the floor is to reject. If you want to make the motion, councillor, let me just clarify the motion. I believe your motion is to reject. Is it to reject and refer back to the committee on ordinance?
Would we want to refer back to ordinance, or would we want to refer it back to the administration?
Well, it needs to go through ordinance first.
Okay, then that would be my recommendation, to reject, send it back to ordinance, fine-tune it.
The motion, the motion's clarified, that is a motion to reject and refer back to the ordinance committee. Has seconded, what's the matter?
Are you granting it leave to, you can't do both. You're going to, you're going to reject it, you're going to reject it.
We can refer, so the rejection is the referral to the subcommittee. So we can refer it back to...
If you're referring it back to the subcommittee, then you refer it back to the subcommittee.
We're not adopting it, so we can refer it back to ordinance.
Can I make a recommendation?
What's your recommendation?
I would just recommend that we reject it, send the list back to the administration, and just have either the chairperson of the ordinance committee just sit down with the administration and look at the list and identify which ones are going to be priorities, and then resubmit the prioritized updates, similar to what councillor in seat eight had mentioned, down to the council. I think it's just going to be cleaner that way.
Motion, so what is, what is the will of the body? You want to reject it and refer it back to the committee?
Well, there's, there's a motion to reject, so I'm going to support the motion to reject for that purpose.
That's what's on the table. Motion to reject with no referral, just for the record, is on the floor right now. Councillor in seat four.
So if we do reject it, and it goes back to the administration to send it back down, then there's going to be an extra step. They'll have to send it back to the council, the council will have to forward it to ordinance. If we just refer it back to ordinance, then that chair can immediately have the conversation. It's just a, although we don't have a CFO or a city administrator at this time anyway, so I guess it...
It's not like it's going to happen next week. But, so let's, let's dispose of the motion that's before us, is a motion on the floor to reject. Roll call.
Excuse me, councillor Cadim?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Kilby?
No.
Lalibie-Lobo?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes. Next order of business.
Miscellaneous traffic ordinance for passage through second reading and enrollment.
Motion to pass the item through second reading and enrollment would be appropriate?
Motion.
Made by councillor Kilby, seconded by councillor Deion, discussion. Haring none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have the proposed ordinance relating to cemetery fees for passage through second reading and enrollment.
Motion to pass through ordinance, the cemetery fees through second reading and enrollment, made by councillor Cadim, seconded by councillor Pereira, discussion. Haring none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Councillor in seat five, opposed. The ayes have it.
We have water and sewer rates for passage through second reading and enrollment.
So moved.
Motion to pass the item through second reading and enrollment has been made by councillor Cadim, seconded by councillor Pereira, discussion. Councillor in seat two, councillor Deion.
Yeah, I have a question. I voted no the first time, I'll be voting no again, but I do have one question, and I don't know if we need to waive the rules to ask.
We do, yep. Motion to waive the rules made by councillor Deion, seconded by councillor Peckham. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Ferland.
This is just a quick, pretty easy question, I think. So we recently, at a subsequent meeting, made a transfer to cover the loss of revenue in the water department because the water and sewer rates had not been approved yet?
Yes.
Okay, so my question is, are people going to be getting retro, when they get their water bills, are they going to be retroactive water bills? Because technically, that would be double paying.
Yeah, no, we do not, we haven't, we've never done retroactive billings. The ordinance that's in front of you states from October 1st, because that was a revised ordinance that went to you, but no, we will not be billing retro.
Okay.
We'll be starting from current.
Thank you. I yield.
Councillor in seat one, councillor Cadim.
Thank you, just further clarification. So the transfer that we had made, I think, two meetings ago, was to cover that initial, right?
Initial six months.
So that's why we wouldn't have to go retro, and that's...
Correct.
Perfect. I yield.
Any further? There's a motion to pass through second reading and enrollment that has been made and seconded. Roll call.
Councillor Cadim?
Yes.
Deion?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lalibie-Lobo?
No.
Lee?
No.
Peckham?
No.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
I just want to let the record reflect, the reason, and I didn't say at the last meeting, but the reason I decided to say yes to the water and sewer rate increases this time was because it's pretty clear that if the city does not do it now, next year the water rates are going to triple to a percentage that people have never seen, upwards to maybe 20 to 50 cents per C, per CCF. So I felt it was in the city's best interest to do it now, because going into next year, you're going to have the debt exclusion, a possible fee, water and sewer rate increases, you're going to see the real estate tax bills start getting caught up with the real estate market. I just couldn't stomach seeing that all go on the taxpayer all next year. Next order of business.
Whereas the Fall River Police Department no longer requires civil service certification for the position of chief of police, whereas 66 other municipalities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts have chief of police appointments subject to civil service and require testing through MGL Chapter 31, Section 59. And whereas the process of hiring the chief of police through civil service would create a more equitable appointment process, now therefore be resolved that the Committee on Ordinances and Legislation meet to review this recommendation and discuss the potential benefits of returning this position back to civil service standards.
Motion?
To refer to ordinance?
Motion to refer to ordinance made by councillor Pereira, seconded by councillor Deion, discussion. The sponsor of the resolution, councillor in seat six, councillor Peckham.
That was quite the opening, thank you.
Full of energy tonight.
Appreciate it. All right, so the reason I filed this was, and I'll be quite frank, it's to take politics out of policing, okay? I did notice over the last two years, sitting as the public safety chair, interacting with the chief, the prior chief, quite a bit, that a lot of the things that I had tried, excuse me, I had tried to do or get processed or passed, it was a go-back-and-forth between me, the chief, and the mayor. And the reason for that being is, the chief of police currently is a, is an appointed position by the mayor and not civil service. Our current chief does not have civil service protection, so therefore, at any point, you upset the mayor, you could lose your job. And I don't, I don't believe that's how a chief of police should operate. I have noticed, under mayoral appointees and not civil service appointees, that there is a morale issue within a department. And how I can see that playing out in the future is, is, and this is in regards to the interim now, this is, again, what I saw over the last two years as the chair and dealing with the chief. I would like to see the chief be able to make his own decisions and not have to worry about being canned, for lack of a better word, be able to do his due diligence in his position, and not have to worry about losing his job. I can tell you that I personally, while speaking to the mayor, at one point was asked why I called the chief directly and didn't go through the mayor to speak to the chief, which I don't know where that rule came from. I believe there's other councillors sitting here, too, that he did say the same thing to, inquiring as to why councillors were calling him directly and not going through the mayor himself. It's not how things operate with two different branches, again, for the 100th time since I've been a councillor. Again, another issue that was brought up by the police department when I was filing this resolution was with the union. It makes it quite awkward when you got the chief of police who's appointed by the mayor, sitting on the side of the administration and not representing his officers themselves. So when you come up with CBA ideas, the chief's on the side of the mayor and pretty much telling you why the officer shouldn't get what they're asking for. I don't think the chief should be put in that position. I think the chief should be civil service, and have his contract brought forth that way, and the patrolmen don't have to worry about the back and forth in CBA negotiations. I won't keep this lengthy.
Yeah.
I'll leave it at that. I yield, thank you.
Councillor in seat one, councillor Cadim.
Thank you. So I guess I'm going to say, make some unpopular statements, as I typically do. So I'll support this, because I think there, there should be some conversation in ordinance. However, I completely disagree. I, serving as an administrator, I don't know that civil service really does what it should do. I think it worked at one point. What it essentially does is establish a testing system, and it does not measure the intangibles. There's more to being a department head and a chief than just taking a test and coming, scoring the highest, right? So you take the top three candidates and get to choose, you know, the top three candidates and have a reason why you're bypassing the first candidate to be chief. Nowhere in the test does it say, are you a good fit for the community? How do you capture that on a test? Okay? And then some, some of it is history. Are you a leader? I mean, it comes back down to council president and vice president. I know we got the debate on, should it be the, you know, the top vote getter, the, you know, the top two vote getters become president and vice president? I disagree with that. Again, the intangibles. Just because I may come in the top, you know, get the most votes from the city, doesn't mean I know how to run a meeting, or I have the ability to run a meeting. You know, there, there's more that goes into it. And I think by doing civil service, all you're doing is limiting our pool. It comes back to making sure we have the best qualified candidate. And in terms of negotiations, department heads should be in negotiations. If, if you're looking to entrust the, and we're talking about the police chief, but if you're looking to entrust the police chief in making sure that he has a stake on his department, which will be civil service, you're trying to support him, then you can do that. The problem becomes is whether or not we have the right mayor, right? So that's the real question. Do we have the right mayor in the leadership position to give those people who have been identified as the true leaders and give them the resources and the authority to make those decisions? They are the subject matter experts. I would want a chief before us, but there has to be accountability. So the chief needs to be able to manage his, his department. He should have the opportunity to come back before the, the mayor, whether appointed or not appointed, because it comes back down to any contract that's issued by, by the mayor. You need to be able to surround yourself, not with yes people. You need to be able to surround yourself with people who are going to tell you the truth, whether they agree with you or disagree with you, and why they disagree with you. If you can't have that open dialogue, then we obviously have the wrong mayor in the positions. And if the, if there are department heads who are not comfortable to have that open dialogue, then we've got the wrong department heads in those positions. You have to have it. They just need to understand at some point, the mayor is the executive, the executive branch. So when the mayor says, okay, I understand what you're saying, but we need to go in direction A, then they just need to follow and go in direction A. But there needs to be some oversight. I think by doing civil service, all we're doing is just allowing a test to take place. You've got a process. We can still have the same process, but I am telling you that a test does not capture, you know, what we need to, I mean, we look at it in the schools, MCAS. How many times did we say that MCAS doesn't make any sense? We could have officers, and I'm not saying we need to go outside, because we can still have a contractual person, like we've been having all through this period, and still have it from within sight. I'm not suggesting we go outside. But you're looking at a test. So somebody who's not a good test taker is going to lose points because they didn't test well, and maybe they get an 80 versus somebody with a 90, but their, their intangibles are, they're a true leader, they're seen in the department as a leader. But we don't even get to, we don't even get to an opportunity to interview them, because they're, they're not in the top three. To me, it doesn't make any sense. Then you've got, you know, veteran preference and, and points there, so you've got people jockeying up, and it, and it could just be, you know, one point, two points, and then they're, they're out. And then we're not having the opportunity to get the best fit for the position. And I think there's something to be said about the intangibles. That's just, that's just me, but I, I'll put it to the committee, because I think it's, it's absolutely worth the, the debate back and forth, and I'd be willing to, to debate anybody on this, on this matter personally, but with that, I yield.
Thank you, councillor in seat five, councillor.
Well, I think the, the purpose by councillor Peckham was to try to make an attempt out of eliminating some of the things that he's probably witnessed, and I know that I've witnessed over the past couple of years, as far as the politicizing of certain positions in, in regards to that. And I, to be truthful, I think no matter what direction we go, whether we go with the civil service or, you know, keeping it the way it is, there's going to be political challenges, no matter which direction we go. But I think, what, I think what councillor Peckham was trying to do is mitigate it the best it can, keep, keep sort of decision-making in-house, rather than out of the mayor's office. And please correct me if I'm wrong on that.
No, not at all.
So, you know, on that, on that note, I think, you know, I think councillor Peckham has, has a point there. And councillor, you know, councillor seat one, I think that, you know, this, this is just a, this illustrates that there's, there's two sides to this. And whatever direction we go, we're going to need to have some integrity, no matter which way we go. We're going to need to see some leadership out of the, the chief of police position, no matter where we go. I was one that appreciated the most recent one that we had. I had a really good report with him, and I don't know what direction we're going to And I don't know what direction we're gonna go now, but I would like to see, one way or another, I would like to see the politicizing of the position out. I'd like to see a chief of police that is just focused on the job at hand and not worried about how, having someone else in his ear saying how this is gonna be political if that person can't do their job the way it's supposed to be done. So with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanna remind the council also has a say in the chief too, right? We have, the council as a body would need to approve of the appointment of the police chief. So it does fall on the mayor to send the appointment down, so just so we're aware. Don't lose sight of that. Counselor in seat seven, did you want to speak? Counselor in seat two, Counselor Deon.
Yeah, I think if we wanna take the politics out, which I think we should, there's a number of things we can do. Do I agree with a certain extent on the civil service? Yes. Do I get that just because you score the highest doesn't make you the best? I can also agree with that. You know, there's a such thing as, I think it should be properly vetted. I think that's where my issue lies. There's a such a thing, I believe it's called a 900-hour chief. You get somebody that's retired, they were either a chief in the state police, the FBI, a different police department, they have the experience, the knowledge. They have no prior thoughts. They don't know anybody in the department. They come in, they put in 900 hours. They'll identify your problems, they'll identify your issues, they'll identify your strong candidates, if they feel somebody's well-qualified. And then I think beyond that, we need a vetting process and a committee who knows law enforcement, knows the job, knows the requirements, knows the intangibles. Not, and not to insult people by any stretch, because I wouldn't put myself there and I worked in corrections. I wouldn't put myself there. I've never been a police officer. I don't think you just randomly pick five people from the community and say, okay, tell us if you think this is gonna be a good chief. They don't know. You don't know unless you've done the job. So I think we need a proper vetting as well. And that would just be my recommendation and the road I'd like to see us go down. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Before I recognize our colleague in seat six, is Counselors in seats three, four, eight want to speak on this item? No, Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
I just wanna say, I appreciate all the sentiments. Counselor in seat one, I do agree somewhat. The only thing that I wanna add is it's a civil service process from officer right through deputy chief. So if you're gonna show leadership skills, you should have shown them right through those ranks as well. And to my understanding, through civil service, you can also have an interview process. If I'm not mistaken, I'm not 100% positive on that. I would have to look it up. Maybe Counselor C. One could help me out with that. But I believe even though there is a civil service test and score, that you can still interview at the top of the list. I may be mistaken again. But as far as leadership qualities, to rise to officer sergeant, lieutenant, captain, deputy chief, we should know by then if your leadership skills are there or not. Also, to my understanding, the civil service test for the chief does have a leadership aspect to it, which is different than the regular civil service test for officers. I just wanted to add that. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor C. One. Counselor Kadim.
Thank you. So just to my colleague's point, that there is an interview process and it's a percentage of the total score. And that's where I think things get lost because you don't get the intangibles. However, to his point, and it was a statement I was really gonna make, was, you know, through the process, and I think, I think there's, it's broken. I truly believe civil service is broken because I think, number one, we've got people who are moving through the ranks that should not be moving through the ranks and then move into the ranks because they're in the top three position. And then we wonder why we get into the situations that we find ourselves in, right? Because that's the process. However, we can't change that. What I will say is I absolutely wholeheartedly agree with Counselor in seat two in terms of a vetting process. We just need a process that truly and transparently vets individuals for the positions. What I will say is, is I think internally, and this is not necessarily for us to make a decision on, but I think when we start talking about what the future chief of the police department looks like, we need to start asking questions in terms of how do we prepare our officers to go from patrol to the sergeant, to the lieutenants, to the captains, onto the deputies? I think some folks cannot make those transitions. It's very difficult. The biggest transition to make, in my opinion, and I'm not in this industry, however, I've seen it enough, is the transition from patrol to sergeant. That is the most challenging transition an officer has to make and they're not properly prepared to make that. And there's not enough resources for them. So I think, number one, we should be talking about what type of resources are we gonna have and what are we gonna be looking for? But that's part of the vetting process. This is part of the interview questions that we need to have. And these are part of the intangibles, that a scoring, you're not gonna take a test and say, okay, how are you gonna, how do you better have your officers prepared to make the transition? So you can build a farm system from within. You don't get to check, you know, item, question, answer A is the best response, right? Because there's no real good responses. It's not a one-size-fits-all. You need to be able to have those, that dialogue and that conversation. But there's a lot that goes into it. And I know we have that, the civil service process, and it's in there to protect people. And I get the politics, but we'll never, to be, we've gotta be truthful. We'll never eliminate politics, right? There's politics even if we're not in the political realm, right? There's politics in corporate America. It's just, that's what happens when you have people in the position of leadership. They make decisions and sometimes they're political decisions. I think it's just one of those things. We try to minimize the politics. We're in a political arena and we just need to minimize it. And the only way to do that is to have those right people and the right leadership and have vetting processes that are transparent and that we all understand and support. Because I think it's one thing, you know, and this is where we go back to the taxes, right? It's one thing to say we're not gonna increase taxes, but then we're sitting here and saying that we need to provide more resources to the officers, right? And officer wellness and things like that. That comes at a cost. So part of that is increased, you know, fees and taxes to support not only the police department, but the fire department. So this, it goes a long way. But again, I think, and I'm not trying to, you know, say that this isn't a good resolution because I think it sparks, even at a minimum, it'll spark a good discussion and debate that will generate, even if it's just more than, you know, the civil service process, what we need to do to help improve the police department in terms of resources. So I applaud my colleague. I just personally am not in favor of the civil service process, but I look forward again to the debate. So with that, I yield.
Anything further? Motion to refer to ordinance has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Whereas water has been a source of energy for hundreds of years and whereas there are miles of water mains running through the city of Fall River and whereas hydropower is now a source of renewable energy, now therefore be it resolved that the administrative community utilities investigate the possibility of harvesting energy from specially-designed in-pipe turbines to be installed in water mains to generate electricity and be it further resolved that a presentation be delivered to the committee on finance within 90 days with all information acquired by the administrator of community utilities on this technology.
Motion?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. Discussion, one of the sponsors of the resolution, Counselor in seat eight, Counselor Pereira.
Yes, myself, Counselor Deon and Counselor Lee put the resolution in because we have, a couple of us have already spoken to Mr. Ferlin about these turbines that go into water pipes. When we had our meeting in ordinance committee relative to water rate increases, Mr. Cherio was also here and said that he would like to be able to come down too to finance with Mr. Ferlin to kinda talk about what's going on in the water and sewer department. And we used to do that a few years ago and that stopped. So with this idea that came forth, then we're looking at ways to save money and maybe if we could get some electricity generated through hydropower, perhaps it would pay for some of the electricity even in the water department or other buildings throughout the city, but just to look into it. So I will yield and let my colleagues address their concerns.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in, one of the sponsors of the resolution, Counselor in seat two, Counselor Deon. I'm sorry, Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lee.
Yeah, so I believe, and someone can correct me where I'm wrong, but about maybe a year ago or so, when we were having discussions about, the first, very first discussions of water rates and I believe we were talking about different ideas that we could utilize funding to invest in. And I did bring this up. As a matter of fact, this constituent that texted us with the website regarding the, in the turbines, that was a link that I had, that I had talked to you about. I think I even sent you the link at one point about a year ago or so, to Mr. Ferlin. So when this was brought up again in conversation, I even, I texted everyone and said, I love the idea. I would like to see this happen. However, Mr. Ferlin did speak to us about it that time. And he said it was a possibility, but he wasn't, I don't think he was completely sold on the idea. So I know we'll probably talk about this later down the line. Because in certain communities, and I believe the article talked about Portland, Oregon, as a place that has made this investment before. And it did bring down some electrical costs and things like that. And just going to a further conversation, you know, with Counselor Kadim and others about where I lay on not wanting to raise certain fees and I'm always looking to see where we can find the cuts and find the decreases. I've never been opposed, and I can reference it many times. I've never been opposed to making infrastructural investments. And sometimes those are costly, you know? But I'm willing to make those costly investments because I know in the long term it will benefit the taxpayer and the fee, and the fees along the way, long term. And I think that's part of the reason why we keep on digging ourselves in a hole now. It's because we are ignoring a lot of the infrastructural investments that we should have made regarding the transfer station, regarding the closing down of our landfill, which has caused a lot of our financial problems that have happened since. And the CSO issue as well that we've been going through and the flooding issues that we've gone through. And even now, you and I would agree, Council President, that it's been a mistake that the current administration is still to this day not invested properly with the opera funding as far as infrastructure goes. And, you know, I'm still gonna, I'm still gonna keep on chipping away at that. Just the same is with me, I'm willing to invest in what we need to for composting because, again, long term, that could, that can benefit us long term. I do believe that this, something like this, maybe not this specifically. I know that you have, Mr. Ferlin has opposition to this specific project, but I'd still would like to see the presentation regardless. And if this can spark a discussion into what we can see long term for an infrastructural investment, I would like to, I'd like to see that. So I'm gonna, obviously, I supported this resolution, but we're just trying to start a discussion on what we can see going forward as an infrastructural investment that would help not just the costs long term, but the quality in which the service is provided as well. So with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor in seat two, Counselor Deon.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out that, you know, so often, I don't know why, but in Fall River, we're so far behind the curve that this is an opportunity for us to finally be in front of the curve, ahead of the curve, you know, maybe even a leader in something. You know, just yesterday, Governor Baker signed a $4 billion federal COVID relief funding spending bill. Within that bill, he has infrastructure investment, $100 million to fund grant for water and sewer infrastructure improvements. You know, I think as fast as the ink dried on that bill, our grant writer or somebody should be on this, should be on this. You know, we need to try to get part of this $100 million. We have, maybe this is some money that could be put towards an endeavor such as this. In addition to that, it's $100 million to improve culverts, dams and other environmental infrastructure. That maybe, perhaps some of that money could help Mr. Barlow down on Dickinson Street with the issues down there. I don't know. But, you know, the monies are there, the innovation is there. And I think, you know, somebody made the point today, 17 years ago, they were paying at kiosks for parking and Fall River just did it in 2021. I don't wanna be there with water and sewer. I don't wanna be there with our trash. We need to stop making advancements and stop being a leader and taking advantage when we can of monies that are out there to help us succeed. And with that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything further?
Motion.
There's a motion to adopt that has been made and seconded. Correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Motion has been made and seconded. Hearing no further discussions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next order of business.
Is it a citation?
Motion to adopt.
Item 20?
Sixteen was the citation.
Sorry, thank you. I had the wrong paper up. Motion, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the motion.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counsel Vice President. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item 17 is the order granting permission to Brinnet's Corporation for the curb removal.
Motion to refer to the Committee on Public Works and Transportation.
Motion to refer to public works and transportation has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item 18 is the order granting permission to People Incorporated for curb removal.
Motion to refer to public works and transportation.
Motion to refer the item to public works and transportation has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And item 19 is the order granting permission to Jerry Ayers for the curb removal at 457 Locust Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Pereira. Seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number 20, ordered that the dispatch and communication center located in the Fall River Police Station at 685 Pleasant Street be named in memory of Joseph Joe Torres, who served the community as a dedicated dispatcher for 28 years.
Motion?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion? Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
I'll keep this brief. Joe, I had the pleasure of working with Joe when I worked at the police station. And we talk about our employees and how we have to retain employees and it was said a couple of times tonight. He was probably one of the best dispatchers the city had and probably one of the best we've ever had. I had the opportunity to train under Joe. And Joe was the type of guy that had a heart of gold. He was a big teddy bear. But where I wanna go with this is, is I'll tell the story about Joe and I thought about this after he passed. And I was sitting in dispatch two and you gotta run plates and every plate has a code. Or you gotta run a serial number for a firearm. You gotta, a million things you gotta run. And back then, we had a little black screen with the green letters on it and Joe was in dispatch one, I was in dispatch two and he was overseeing my, it was brand new overseeing me. And I said, Joe, I gotta run firearm registration. What code is it? He goes, you see that big black book up there? I'm not kidding. The book was this size and a half of codes that go on that thing. And he made me look through the entire book until I found it. And you know what that made me do? It gave me the ability to find the information on my own and not just get told. Because when you have to find the information on your own, you retain it. When somebody just tells you something, it's not the proper way. Joe taught you in a way that you retain the information, you became a great dispatcher. And I think that's why the communication center that we have today does such great work is because of people like Joe and many others that have given 25-plus years to the city. And I just thought this was appropriate to do because the city did lose a valuable, valuable asset. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything further? Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadim.
So what's the, the motion was to adopt?
Motion to adopt the order, yes.
So I'm not gonna be supporting it and just, the only reason is, I've said this before, I think we've gotten way too far away from dedications and naming of buildings and the school department just did something which I absolutely disagree with. I mean, there, there needs to be a criteria in terms of how we're naming things after people. Not to say that this individual doesn't deserve it. I would have liked to see this go to ordinance, to really kind of establish what the criteria is gonna be. But, you know, we've got a number of employees that have either passed away or something has happened that, you know, I think we can, we would all like to dedicate something. But there needs to be at least some type of criteria in terms of how we go about, you know, naming either buildings or locations after people. So with that, I'm not gonna be supporting it. I wish that it would have just been referred so we could have just really started that process with that, but with that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat four, Counsel Vice President.
So I'm not opposed to this either, but I do agree with Counselor in seat one that there needs to be some type of process. I would support sending it to ordinance so that we could have that discussion and put it in place there and then adopt it. With that, I yield.
Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lee.
I'm also going to support the order, but I would love to co-sponsor any kind of resolution regarding to what Counselor C. One's talking about because I agree with him on it. But we, we do need that kind of criteria, but I am gonna support this order. So with that, I yield.
Counselor C. Deon, did you have your hand raised?
No, I would just, if it, it seems that the will of the committee is to refer it to ordinance, then I would make a motion that we have, what do we have on?
Let's just postpone the motion to adopt first and if that doesn't pass, then we can vote motion.
Then we can refer it.
Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
All right, I've sat here for two years and watched many things get named after people and I do respect what Counselor in seat one is saying. What I would like to say is, this is the first time I've actually requested that something be named after somebody because I do feel that there has to be a specific purpose for that to be done. What I would like to see go to ordinance is maybe somebody file a resolution that there be a process from here on out and not just take this one specific item and say, well, we're gonna now refer this. We've named 35 things after people this year. We're gonna take this one to use as a project to send back to ordinance. I, maybe somebody could file a resolution saying that from here on out to name a building or a room or something in the city after somebody, then this is the steps we're gonna have to take. Because I did hear Counselor Kadim say it many meetings ago and I did agree that there has to be a process and I forget what was gonna be named. I do agree with that, but I don't think this is where we should set the precedent. I think a resolution should be filed where things are ironed out in ordinance and this doesn't come up again. With that, I yield.
Just so the council's aware, there is an ordinance already because remember we had that whole discussion about a park recently? There were some individuals here about a specific park that they wanted to get named after them and that item had to get referred to the planning board for the planning board to discuss. So what I think should probably happen is the ordinance committee should look at the ordinance, somebody should file a resolution, look at the ordinance to make sure we're consistent with what we do before the city council adopts any kind of order going forward. So there is ordinances in place. Don't ask me exactly what they are, but I know that there is a process by which that we need to refer things. Example, the, there was a park. I don't remember which one. I think it was, it was at the last meeting or the meeting before that we, what was it?
Griffin.
Griffin, Griffin Park. Somebody wanted to rename Griffin Park. And we referred it to the planning board. And the planning board is gonna send their recommendation back to this council for their adoption. I don't know if that has anything to do with, if it just parks, if it's buildings. I don't know what that is, but I just want the council to be aware there is an ordinance already. Counselor in seat four.
So if we were to adopt this, where does this go?
It goes to the mayor for signature.
And the police chief has no say whatsoever in his building? Not that I think.
No, I mean, maybe the mayor will call the police chief before he signs the order. I don't know.
So just point of information, you just said it's gonna go to the mayor. So does it go to the mayor? So we're bypassing the ordinance? So it's not going to planning?
It's not going to the planning board right now. The referral is to adopt. So yes, the city council is adopting something that didn't go to the planning board. But I wanna make it clear, I think there's things that we've done in the past that we haven't referred to planning. We've just adopted it. I don't remember what they were, but we've dedicated like 20 things this year, I think, so.
Should we check what the ordinance says before we vote on this?
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, we wanna do that, it's up to you. I mean, I'm just, I don't wanna foggy the situation anymore. There's already ordinances in place.
Point of information if I may.
Is now the time to do that? I don't know. Counselor in seat six.
I do believe Counselor in seat eight, did you not tell me earlier that you did speak to the chief regarding this issue?
I did.
And he wasn't opposed to it, correct? He was, he was wondering where the plaque would go, inside or inside the building?
When I talked to the chief about the possibility of dedicating a room, he said, nobody's really going to see that. Maybe it should be in the main entrance coming in, a plaque dedicated, and then, you know, at least a plaque you have where you can put other people as well. So I would, that's.
And not, not to put you on the spot, it's just that it was brought up, it's the chief's building, whether or not he approved, it was to my understanding that he, he does, he just had some questions on where it would be acknowledged.
Well, that's not the understanding that I got. What I got was not putting a plaque or something or dedicating a room, but more so doing a dedication of some sort of a plaque that was in the main foyer so that people could see that a room. Did you talk to the chief at all about this?
No, because there was none when I wrote the resolution. It was actually the day he resigned, and I didn't know who the intern was going to be at the exact moment.
I'm not reading all this. All right, just so the client's aware, naming or renaming of streets, parks, buildings, or other property. We know what the purpose of the section is.
And for the clarification, this is a room within the building. I'm not asking for a building, I'm not asking for anything other than a room with a plaque outside the door on the entrance that the guy walked through for 29 years. That's what I'm looking for here. Nothing more.
We have a roll call? Yeah.
Well, he's reading that. What, what does that say, Mr. President?
Let me just, let me just really quickly let you know that there's a whole ordinance under the city code that speaks to petitions, purposes, filings, the city council's initial action. The city council shall receive a petition and refer it to the planning board for its recommendation, but is that for parks? We don't know, because it really doesn't speak to detail. There's research, there's public hearings, there's recommendations, naming of public buildings and streets, the name of a public building, street or area, which we're not doing here. So clearly, there's some appetite here for an ordinance change, if the council so wishes to do that. But this is like three pages, so we don't have to do that right now. We're in full council.
Motion to refer to ordinance.
There's a motion on the floor that I'd like to dispose of first, which is a motion to adopt.
And then it can go to ordinance.
So just point of clarification, it's not really a point of clarification, I was just going to throw it out there. If you're not going to entertain a motion to refer to ordinance committee and let me see where that vote goes, I'm just going to object, so listen.
Motion to refer, I think.
See, it's the, yeah, that's true. The motion to refer does take precedence. So a motion to refer has been made by Counsel Kadeem, is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Counselor Pereira. Discussion? Counselor in seat four.
So, Counsel President, what section were you reading? 66, 186?
66. Yep, 186.
Any request for naming or renaming a street, park, building, or other property within the city limits shall be initiated in writing from one or more residents, business owners, or tenants within the city of Fall River by completing a petition for naming or renaming, which should provide the following information, which is what's here, and then it should be filed with the city clerk's office by noon, no less than 10 days prior to the next meeting of the council.
So if I interrupt, can I interrupt? It's about two pages.
No, but it goes on to say the city clerk shall provide copies of the petition and supporting documents to the city council, the mayor, corporation council, city engineer, and planning director prior to council meeting. Did they get that?
No.
No.
And then the initial action is the city council shall receive the petition and refer it to the planning board for its recommendation.
No, it was not, it was not received as a petition, it's received as a council order. So they've, over the years, they're handled differently, because they're handled, they're taken as a council, just as, as they're received from the mayor's office, or, you know, as they have been received in the past when they've come down from another member of the council, or when they've come down from the administration as an order to name a building or to name a room within the school department. They come as an order, they're not a petition from the, a member of the public. So we've not treated them the same as this petition.
So just so everybody's aware, what's probably going to happen is after this discussion that just occurred right now, when the city clerk goes upstairs to the sixth floor tomorrow and asks the mayor to sign the order, you know what he's going to say? He's going to say, are we following the ordinance? And we're going to make, I don't know, maybe we are, maybe we're not, and he's probably not going to sign it. So let's refer it to the Committee on Ordinance, which is the motion on the floor, let's have that discussion, and let the council amend the ordinance if it's necessary. We don't need to read the ordinance book right now. Counselor, Counselor in seat four, you still have the floor.
I yield.
Counselor in seat two, Counselor Deion.
Yeah, I just have one question. Through the chair to Counselor in seat eight, can you clarify for me again what the chief's interpretation was of this? Was he, did you say he was in agreement with the room or in agreement with a plaque recognizing the individual?
He, we didn't really talk about the room, said there was, you know, a resolution coming in to name a room. He said, oh, a plaque in the hallway would be somewhere that people would more see it. You know? I said, well, maybe you want to call Counselor Peckham and have a conversation with him.
So maybe we need more clarification.
Maybe he has a different interpretation. I don't know. Yeah, I called Chief Garvin, because Chief Garvin is the interim chief. So I did call him to wish him well as interim chief, to exchange phone numbers, to offer my services if there was something that I, you know, could do for the police department, that type of thing. And then the conversation went into, so sorry, you lost someone, and there might be, you know, of something coming on the, the council agenda relative to naming, so the, you know, maybe the entrance way coming in would be good, people, you know, more people would see it, and I suggested that he contact Counselor Peckham.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I yield.
And I just want to, I want to make this even more complicated. It also doesn't say anything about, we're talking about property, right? We're not actually talking about a building. This is a room inside of the police station.
Right.
Right? We're not talking about renaming the police station, we're not talking about renaming City Hall, we're not talking about renaming Maplewood Park, Sean Kadeem's Park. Like, we're not doing, we're not making any kind of a suggestion like that. It is a room in a building of which the ordinance does not speak to, so.
That's great, then I'll, I'll submit for the next, for your last final meeting, because I think you're the best president, that the chamber be called the Cliff Ponti Chamber.
Yeah, well, that's not going to pass, counsel.
But do you see what, but do you see what I'm saying? There's still meaning behind it.
I get it. I just. I just want everybody to be clear. It needs to be amended in ordinance, which is getting referred to, I believe.
Okay.
Counselor Peckham.
Just one further question. Madam Clerk, roughly how many things have been named after somebody this, over the last two years? Quite a few, right? Did they all go through this process?
There have been some, and there have been rooms.
And then some haven't. Have some come down as orders and passed?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat one.
That's, I mean, that's, that's still a row of it, right? Like, I appreciate it, but my frustration is that we're just naming things after people because we like them. There's got to be a criteria, and I still have an issue with the ordinance, because the ordinance is so vague, we're sending it to planning. So what's the criteria? Give me a criteria, because we've got to be fair about this, right? I mean, we were gonna, we were gonna, I think it was last year, we were gonna recognize and name a bench next to Route 79, because somebody ate their breakfast there every morning. Like, this is where we're going. I mean, we just, we named, we just saw the school department name a, first it was just the building, then it was the entire school was, was named, right? And I, I respect the family and stuff, but there are, there are people who have also provided and had a significant impact to the community that have not had anything named after them. There needs to be a criteria, so it's fair and balanced, that's all I'm saying. And at some point, we've just got to be able to, you know, I mean, how many, how many years have, has the city, when has the city been incorporated?
1803.
1803. Okay, so think about how many employees we have lost since 1803. We don't have enough buildings and rooms to name people after people, right? So there are significant, there are significant contributions that have been made by other employees. I'm, all I am saying is, is that I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but let's just come up with a criteria, let's all agree on a criteria, and then if the individual meets the criteria, then absolutely, let's, let's do it. And let's, let's not have a plaque, let's actually put a, a sign outside the building, outside the room that actually has it, so that it's, it's visible. But from my standpoint, we need to identify what the criteria is and, and make sure that it's consistent, because if not, it's going to continuously be obituary to, you know, how, what the planning board thinks and what the city council is feeling, and we're talking about making things less political. This is as, as political as it gets, right? The city council is voting to name a building after somebody, right? So, okay, let's remove the politics, and let's agree that the criteria is going to be contributions, impacts, things like that, and, and let's be done with it. That's just, that's just where I'm at. I'm not necessarily saying that I would not support this if, if the criteria is established and the individual meets the criteria. That, that, that's it. That's just me as one, Counselor. I yield.
Anything further? Did you have your hand raised, Madam Vice President?
I did, yeah.
Okay.
So if we refer this to ordinance, Madam Clerk, would you be able to also send a communication to the legal department so that they can get a head start on it, that we're looking at this ordinance? I can feel Counselor in seat six's frustration, and I get it. And I don't think anyone is opposed to this. I think we just need to, if we send this there, we can use that to put the ordinance, to correct the ordinance, and then we can vote on this in ordinance, can't we, and send it back? Or is, do we also have to table this here, so it doesn't have to go around the block again?
You can send this order to the ordinance committee and send it back with a recommendation, you know, a positive recommendation.
So that this won't have to be submitted again? We can have the discussion and send it back?
Sure.
Okay. I yield.
Anything further? Motion to refer to ordinance has been made. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have the police chief's report on licenses?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt. Police chief's report has been made by Counselor Kadeem, is seconded by Counselor Pereira. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have the applications for the renewal of auto body shop license.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counsel Vice President. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item 23 is the application for the renewal of an auto repair shop license.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pereira. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
I have a number of, I'm sorry, I have a, I have a number of claims.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council.
Motion moved.
Made by Counselor Pereira, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Kilby. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have minutes of the planning board.
Motion to adopt the minutes.
Motion to adopt the minutes has been made by Counselor Pereira, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
I have a communication from a resident regarding Citizens' input at a, a board meeting. Tiff Board meeting.
I'll just speak on it.
Motion to adopt, place on file.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pereira. Discussion? Counselor in seat eight, Counselor Pereira.
Uh, just, just an add to this communication. In this communication, the Tiff Board meeting should have had a Citizens' input time, and it wasn't on there. I did talk to Mr. Fiola about it, and it will be added to the Tiff Board meetings in the future. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Hearing no further discussion. Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Can take items 27 to 31.
Second.
27 to 31 together has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Kadeem. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
So we have minutes of the city council, public hearing on November 30th, Finance Committee minutes of November 16th and 30th, and regular city council minutes of November 16th and 30th.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made by Counselor Deion, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item 31A is a communication from a city resident regarding a recent incident at the Matthew Cuss Middle School.
There, motion to refer to public safety, made by Counsel Vice President, seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion? Counselor in seat four, Counsel Vice President.
Thank you. I know that we all received this by email, and it was asked that it would be read at
would be read at citizens' input, however, we no longer have the email communication. So I'm going to read it. I did speak to the author, and I have spoken to her since this incident happened, and I, her frustration is that this happened, it's being investigated, and her, their main frustration is that the school, the parents, guardians of, of kids at the school, and all the schools weren't made aware that, that this happened. Not that they want anybody to be, you know, overly worried or, or upset, but it's just a, you know, an opportunity for parents to have a discussion with their kids or, or to know if you're going to be running a little bit late picking up your child from after school, you might want to have a conversation with them. Hey, wait inside the doors. They certainly don't want anyone to, any hysteria, but they would like people to know that this happened, so. Says, "Good evening, members of the city council. I am writing to you all today with my concern about what took place on November 29th, 2021, a little after 4:00 PM at Matthew Cuss Middle School. After the basketball tryouts, a couple of students were outside waiting for their rides when one student was told to get in a vehicle by someone that was not known to the child. The driver then threatened the child, saying that she had an effin' knife. Even though the child did not see the knife, the child realized the danger of the situation and immediately called their mother and walked back to the school doors and grabbed another student. I cannot imagine the horror of the mother hearing her child crying in fear along with the banging on the school doors to be let back in. Within minutes, the parents arrived to retrieve their child and return the child to the safety of their home. The police were immediately called and a report was filed at the child's home as well as at the school. The officers, officers at both locations wanted to meet at the school. Everyone complied with that request and spoke with Principal Rouatt and the vice principal, where they listened to the statements from the child as well as reviewed the surveillance footage. At what point they were able to corroborate the given statement, I'm sorry, at that point, they were able to corroborate the given statement with the actions in the recording. Within the few short hours of this incident, a family member reached out to a couple of city councillors to also make them aware of the attempted abduction that had just occurred. The next day, they were very surprised that parents, guardians, and the other schools within the city had not been made aware or had not yet received notification about what had happened at Cuss the day prior. With this knowledge, a family member again reached out to the city councillors, very concerned that schools, parents, guardians, and students have yet, have yet not been told of the attempted abduction. A detective was put on the case and more interviews, confirmations, and investigating was done, but still no announcement has been made to the public. With the advancements in technology that exist today, the family felt that at the very least, all of the city schools should have been notified to ensure that everyone had a fair opportunity to be vigilant and protect the safety of the children in the city. At the next tryout, multiple family members were parked in the school parking lot and were concerned that there were several students outside waiting for their rides with no supervision. They did, however, see an SRO come out prior to the after-school activity to evaluate the parking lot and speak to some drivers. Just the presence of this officer makes a huge difference. A week has now passed, and still notification has been sent out to parents and guardians regarding the attempted abduction on November 29th. The recorded weekly call on Sunday from Cuss listed changes to pick-up policies at the school, but did not provide an explanation as to why these new policies have been put into place. A week later from the date of the incident, the family was told that when the mayor was spoken to about this incident, one of his concerns was that a knife was not mentioned to him. Was he not told of this detail? And honestly, why would it matter if it was mentioned or not? If an attempted abduction had occurred on school grounds, it should be concerning enough to make parents and guardians aware of this situation. Why did it take over 24 hours for the school committee to be notified of the attempted abduction of a student? Why a week later, a photo of the vehicle has not been posted for public awareness? Why a week later, our parents and guardians throughout the city have still not received a notice about Cuss? Why did the detective tell the family that this could all be a misunderstanding, miscommunication? If the driver of that van had mistakenly tried getting the attention of a student that the driver thought was known to them, that driver would not have, one, taken off after the students were back in the building, two, would be known to the school as a registered pickup family member, and three, the driver would have been there again at the next tryout pickup. The family feels that the detective's statement was an attempt to sweep this under the rug to avoid making the city look any worse than it already does with another dark cloud hovering over Fall River. We are repeatedly told that the city of Fall River is very safe, but in all reality is not, and is now creeping its way onto the school grounds where our children expect to be safe. The family understands that the police need to do their job, and that is an ongoing investigation, but making other families aware of the imminent danger that had presented itself to the students of Fall River is what is most important to them at this moment in time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. You yield?
I, so I have been speaking with her. This was sent to the school committee, the mayor, the, the council, the interim police chief, and the sergeant of the SROs, and there is an investigation that is ongoing, and I believe some new information was brought to light yesterday, which I will, I'm not going to say. But I would also advise that we send this communication and ask, oh, I'm sorry, sorry, Madam Clerk, when we spoke about this earlier today, was the committee of public safety, but also to send this to the school committee for action?
Yes, to both.
To both, and then give the school committee a, a chance to do their due diligence on this, and if, and when they do that, we can always leave to withdraw in public safety?
Correct, yes.
Do you yield, Council Vice President?
I yield.
Thank you. Councilman C. Five, Councilor Lee.
So just at that last, my, my point was going to be very similar to her part at the last, where if we do have any kind of intervention from a public safety standpoint, from a public safety meeting standpoint, that we either invite representatives from either the school committee or school department in general to, to be at that meeting. If, if it's, if this is the vein in which we're going to have an intervention, however, you know, I'll follow the other procedure. If, if it's going to be handled through the school committee, then we can do a leave-to-withdraw. So, that I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Councilman C. Day, Counselor Pereira?
Yeah, I think that although you don't want to put a cloud over the city, we're talking about the safety of children. And many times, if some child is missing, you get an amber alert. You get a, a call from the police department. If something like this happens and you can identify the vehicle, the type of vehicle, then a call, robo-call could be made out that an incident occurred, this vehicle was thought to, you know, tried to abduct a child. I, I think that we can do that, and I don't think that that puts a cloud over us. I think that that makes us look like we're being proactive. And I think we need to look at all the cameras around these middle schools and what those cameras encompass, because from my understanding, and I've spoken to the author of that letter a few times, she was a student of mine, and I, I could hear the, the upset and the fear in her voice. This is her grandchild. And I think that she's not writing to complain about the way the principal or vice principal were. She said they were marvelous. They did a wonderful job, but she's more concerned with why aren't other people being made aware so that all our children can be safe. It's not just about my grandchild. It's about all the children. And, and I think one of the issues was that the camera couldn't get the license plate of that vehicle because of the area that it was in. So we have technology. We need to use it, and we need to make sure that all of our entrances and exits to schools and the parking lots and that. And middle school is where they try to get kids. That's a prime location, is middle schools. You know, lots of the cases that I ever worked with, with the district's attorney's office, a lot of the cyber stuff and, and abductions and things that went out, where middle school kids are target for that. So I think it's a great idea to send it over to the school department too and to have a meeting, because our kids are worth making sure that they are protected. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none. Motion has been made to refer, any, and been seconded. All nibble back. No further discussion has been heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
And lastly, for passage through, final reading through ordination would be the miscellaneous traffic ordinance.
Motion to pass through final ordination has been made by Counselor Pelletier, seconded by Counselor Deion. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Also through final ordination would be the cemetery fees.
Motion to pass the cemetery fees through final ordination has been made by?
So moved.
Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Vice President. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman C. Five, opposed? The ayes have it.
Through final ordination would be the water rates.
Motion to pass through final ordination has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Kilby. Roll call.
Yes.
Deion?
No.
Kilby?
Yeah.
Lullaby LeBeau?
No.